I will now call back to order the regular meeting of Lake Forest School District 67 Board of Education for August 22, 2017. May I have a roll call, please, Eileen?
Mrs. Levert?
Here.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Here.
Mrs. Sands?
Here.
Mr. Borkowski?
Here.
Dr. Lemke?
Here.
Mr. Ford?
Here.
Mr. Novot?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. First, I'd like to welcome all of our students, families, and teachers, and staff back to this new school year. As our school year kicks off, I'd like to just take a moment to review a few major accomplishments that we've done over the past year and take a peek at what is ahead of us. A theme that our district will be focusing on this year is finding joy. And when I start to think through where we've been and where we're headed, it became clear that we have a lot of reasons to be finding joy at this district. As you hopefully know by now, this board's been very focused on achieving the district's vision, mission, and milestones, and doing so in a fiscally responsible manner. Two of the milestones in the vision statement are achievement and instruction, and our staff has made tremendous progress in these areas. Over the past two years, our staff has rolled out a new math curriculum and a new language arts curriculum, implementing the writing workshop and the reading workshop. While we're still early in the process, early results suggest that this is making a significant difference in the growth of our students. One of the main focuses this year will be now to give our teachers a little bit of time to refine the new curricula, to dive deeper into it, and to improve upon it. Another milestone in our vision is talent. Attracting, developing, and retaining our talent is one of our top priorities. This summer, we sent more teachers and staff to New York for the Lucy Hawkins Professional Development Training, and many others participated in other professional development courses back here within our district. This is a direct investment that the board is making in our staff, and that's an investment which we're thrilled to make. The board celebrates our staff's dedication and focus on continuous improvement. We've also hired additional special ed teachers at every school building. This action again brings me back to how we're achieving the district's vision together. Our vision at District 67 is to serve every single student. District 67 doesn't teach to the mean or the median; we strive to reach every student where he or she is at. And these additional special ed teachers are another example of our commitment to that goal. The sixth milestone in our vision is environment, and we're in the midst of a major upgrading of our facilities. Tomorrow, on opening day of our school year, we'll be having a grand opening party at the Haskins Center, which has been renamed Haskins 2.0, or H2O. This space captures our vision in so many ways. Truly a reimagined learning space where our students and staff can be creative and can learn in new and different ways. A quick side note, a request to our admin, if you could please plan in October, two months from now, to provide the board an update on how the space is being used after it's been open for a few months, that would be much appreciated. I think all of us have different goals and ideas on how it might be used, but hearing what reality is would be fantastic. Less exciting than H2O, but every bit as important, is, excuse me, that each of our five school buildings now has new vestibules and new entry procedures. The safety of our students and staff is an absolute priority, and these new entryways to our buildings bring our buildings in line with current best practices. We're now in the early stages of transforming the classrooms in our aging buildings. We have a number of test classrooms that students and teachers will be rotating through, and we have quite a bit of new furniture arriving as well. It was four years ago that we embarked on defining our new vision, and we've made tremendous progress towards achieving that vision over the past few years. We still have much more work to do, but I'm extremely proud and joyful of this board and the entire admin and staff of District 67 for our focus on achieving this vision. On a related but separate topic, I had the honor of attending the staff welcome-back event yesterday. During one part of that event, our superintendent recognized a number of staff members who had recently achieved significant milestones in terms of their tenure at District 67. One staff member's milestone was minimized during the presentation due to his humble approach, and that would be our superintendent himself, Mike Simic, who has now been with District 67 for five years. Congratulations on that accomplishment, Mike, and we look forward to many more years with you. Thank you. That concludes the president's report. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Borkowski. And for the board members that didn't have the privilege of being with the staff, it's pleased to pass on how well-received, and Mr. Borkowski, I haven't told you this yet, but any number of different staff have commented on how well-received your words were to them. Very well-prepared, well-delivered as well, and timely on all topics, incredibly supportive of our staff, and it's a privilege to be able to talk about how passionate both you and our 67 board members are about achieving the district vision and supporting the staff in getting there. Teacher's mind, there's hardly anything that is more energizing or helpful than to hear that we're with you, we're behind you, and keep up the good work, and they are doing really good work. So I wanted to go to address a couple topics that have to do directly with the district's milestones that Mr. Borkowski had mentioned. The first of those is the achievement is our first milestone, that we will be recognized for achieving significant academic, social, and emotional growth for every student. It's not many, or most, or some, but it's every single kid. The focus is on every student, and in these three areas, so it's not just academic growth, but also social and emotional. So we went over this with our K-12 admin team in the spring, went over these milestones. And overwhelmingly, there was one that jumped off the page as being, man, we don't know what to do about that. And that one was social and emotional growth. We defined what social and emotional well-being was for the district last year, those are the Illinois Learning Standards for Social and Emotional Learning. But then, how do you figure out what social and emotional growth winds up looking? How do you measure that in some meaningful way that you can use goal-setting and whatnot? And I've been looking at a group to help us with that, because I've been a firm believer for many years, both based on my personal experience and also professional, that the social and emotional side of every part of work is more important than credentials or academic background, that it's those intangibles in a workplace, emotional intelligence is more important than just about anything else frequently. And there's a group that kept coming up, and it is the Gallup Survey. The Gallup folks have been exploring, surveying with student groups, and utilizing their surveys for nearing a decade now, and they focus on four areas: hope, entrepreneurial aspiration, career and financial literacy, and then also engagement. And that engagement is the one that is most critical. One of the interesting surveys that they did, they surveyed folks across the country, administrators, teachers, people without kids in school, what do you want most to see for your kids? Among the things they could pick from were, want kids to graduate from high school, want kids to have a job after they leave high school, I want kids to want to go to school, I want kids to do well on standardized tests, and a number of other things. Dead last, in every single group, every single group that they polled, the last thing that people wanted from schools was standardized test scores. And so what do we focus on? Every time you hear about how a school is doing, everybody goes to what the test scores are. Every group, ironically enough, agrees that the test scores are the least meaningful part of what's going on there. And also, every single group said the most important thing was that kids went to school to somewhere they wanted to go to school, and they did meaningful stuff there. Every single polling group said the same thing. So what parents want, what kids want, is very, very similar, is they want to go up, they want to work with somebody that cares about them, and they want to have somebody that gives them hope for the future, and they want to be involved and engaged in their school. That's what every kid, no kid gets up in the morning thinking, yeah, I'm going to go to school, I'm going to fail today. That's what I'm all about today. And teachers don't get up and go to work that way either. They're looking for ways to help kids. So these are the nine questions on the Gallup Survey, and a couple of them, in my mind, jump out more than others. One of those is number five, I have a best friend at school. And one of the reasons I like this Gallup Survey so much is because it's short. Kids understand what a best friend means. They get that. We talked about this Gallup Survey in a prior superintendent's report. What is different now, and at the end of that, one of the questions was, alright, so this is interesting information, so what happens with it? So we're going to utilize these surveys this year. Another one that is particularly important is, I have at least one teacher who makes me excited about the future. That's really sort of the money question for a lot of parents. Parents, parents, they're going to send their kids off to school tomorrow. We had back-to-school-day walkthroughs today, and kids are going to come tomorrow. What every parent wants for their kid is, look, I want them to like their teacher, I want the teacher to like them, and I want them to do good stuff together. That's what everybody wants. And the test scores, they want to follow that. Test scores are important, but that's not what everybody sends their kid to school for. They send a school for, their kids to school for connections. So we're going to utilize this, and as much as anything, one of the reasons I wanted to press for this with our admin team was that there aren't quality surveys out there for social and emotional well-being for K-12. There are some that are in development, some that are better than others, but they're really not, this is a part of educational experience that is still very much in development. Rush has asked to partner with the high school on this, and Rush is a leader in executive functioning. We've had a number of sessions on executive functioning at the high school this past year, and be more this year as well. But they might be two or three years developing this. And so what I don't want is, at the end of our 10 years of working on our milestones, we're going to achieve some significant academic gains. We've seen some of the results already, and you'll see those in the assessment report. But I think more important, and I think more important to this board and to our parents and to our kids, is the social and emotional side of the vision. It's much harder to address, and I don't want to get to the end of our 10 years and say, well, yeah, we're going to get to that next time. So I wanted to press the ball up the court on, if we can't figure this out, we are going to work really hard trying, and that goes back to, there's a word in here that I'm looking for. It should be up there. I thought it was up there on this one. Maybe it's on the high school. Where's the word risk? Maybe we used that word risk on the high school milestone, must have. But the idea is that students are going to take meaningful risks that they learn from. It's one of the things that schools do the poorest job of. We are a group of perfectionists that strive for perfection all the time, and every single industry will tell you, especially now with the changes in industry, you have to make a bunch of mistakes and learn from your mistakes. So on that note, there's another thing that you have at your table that I want to talk about that is also about social and emotional well-being. And if you wouldn't mind, please turn to page 81. And for those of you who don't have a copy at your table, what the board members are looking at is a book by Julie Lithcott-Hames, who authored a book named "How to Raise an Adult." And she is coming to the district on December 4th. She'll be here two times, one for our CII time for our teachers to talk to, and another one in the evening. So on page 81, they have a brief story about this. One of our staff members, we gave this to our administrative team, one of our staff members took his kid to college this week, and he put this book in the backseat of the car on purpose, and the kid picked it up. And on the trip, he started to read page 81 to his parents, and he said, well, let's just see how I do on this. He gave himself a little assessment. An 18-year-old should be able to talk to strangers, faculty deans, advisors, landlords, store clerks, human resources, resource managers, coworkers, tellers, and so on. And each of these, there's a part that's titled "The Crutch." We teach kids not to talk to strangers. Kids end up not being able to advocate for themselves. The kid gave himself a nine, because he thought he was pretty good on this one. An 18-year-old should be able to find his way around a campus, or a town, or whatnot. And he gave himself pretty high marks on that one. Should be able to manage his assignments, his workload, and deadlines. And as parents, we remind our kids that their homework is due, and when it's due, and help them do it sometimes. Sometimes you do it for them, and we don't have kids who know how to prioritize their tasks or manage their workload. On this one, the son said, you know, Dad, you're giving me a higher grade on this than I deserve. I think I'd need a five, because I'm pretty lazy, and I don't necessarily manage all my stuff. So the student went through all these things. One of the things I like about this book, there are several places where the author provides a list of, this is what kids should be able to do for themselves, and that's the key, is kids being able to do for themselves. So please flip to page 167. And on page 167, you'll see another list of things that kids should be able to do, what two- and three-year-olds should be able to do. A two- and three-year-old should be able to put away his or her toys, dress him or herself, put clothes in a hamper, clean a plate after meals, assist in setting the table, and brush his teeth, and wash his face, maybe with some assistance. And this goes all the way up to 18-years-old and beyond. The reason that the author wrote the book is because she's a former dean of Stanford, and one of her observations from her students at Stanford was, if you ask Stanford freshmen what they've accomplished in their life, they will give you this amazing list of stuff they've done. If you ask them who they are, and what they care about, and why, that you will have a group of stammering and stuttering kids, because they don't know who they are, and they aren't self-sufficient adults. And so the author is one of the best authors I have seen speak. She's got kids that are our kids' age, and encourage you and everybody else to attend. If you don't read the entire book, I would, some parts you don't have to read, you can skim through them. There are a number of different things in here that you will find as a parent that, as I did, man, I wish I were doing this a little bit better. So this is a learning opportunity for our community and for our staff, and hopefully it will wind up benefiting our students. And with that, I complete the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments for the superintendent? Seeing none, we move to public-
I have a quick question. Did you say when she was coming, Mike?
Yes, December 4th.
Thank you.
We move to public participation. If there's any member of the public who'd like to address the board, please approach the podium. Seeing none, we move to reports and discussions. We'll start off with the strategic plan and of your report.
So our 1617 strategic plan defined our direction for this past year, and this really outlined our strategy and our work to move towards our mission, which is to inspire and maximize growth. And as Superintendent Simic stated, that we want that balanced sense of self, steadfast resiliency, and a deep respect for others. So not necessarily just academic, but both academic and social and emotional. And this plan is also outlined to get us closer to our vision, which is to create those innovative learning communities where all students are creating connections and moving towards their passions. And a lot of this will sound repetitive to what Mike Borkowski shared at the opening statements from his president report. And I'm actually excited about that. And the reason that I'm excited about that is that shows the success of these initiatives, and that they have really permeated the entire organization, and that the success of each of these initiatives is very transparent, and everyone understood the work, everyone was empowered to do that work throughout the entire organization, and that we accomplished that work to get there. Our core values drove how we got to that work, and as Mr. Simic was stating, every child, that's our focus, continues to be our focus, and will continue to be, that we want students actively engaged, and that talent piece that we're hiring, and maintaining, and investing in the best educators possible for our students to develop their success and move us towards our mission and vision. I'm going to make this brief tonight because you've had the report. We've also talked about these initiatives throughout the year, and as Mr. Borkowski stated, the success is just, it's there. It's evidenced in every possible way, through building structures, through curriculum, and through even our opening day with teachers. So just to highlight a few of the initiatives that we completed this year, we developed and beta-tested a personalized learning plan, which really helps us delve into student growth, both academic and socially emotionally, and so both parents and staff members can see how our kids are growing and how we can support them in better ways. We developed a K-8 scope and sequence for social and emotional learning standards, so from kindergarten through eighth grade, every teacher knows where to find what should be taught in those areas. We still have much work to do in this arena, and we will continue to do that over the next year. But to have a documented curriculum which states what should be taught is a fantastic place to start, because you can't assess something that you don't teach. So now we're moving into how we'll implement that in the classroom, and how we'll support our teachers to make sure that all of these skills and strategies are being taught. As Mr. Borkowski stated, we're going to continue implementing and refining the reading and writing workshop, and that is evidenced through some of the early assessment reports that we're getting. But seeing as those are preliminary, and we don't have access to our peer groups quite yet, we want to save that hopeful success for the assessment report coming in the next few months. We developed inquiry-based science units, K-8, so that's another really big achievement. We're moving towards an inquiry-based model where students have empowerment, engagement, and really a hands-on focus. That is all documented and being implemented as well. We provided high-level, job-embedded professional development to get all that done. So there's many people sitting in the room who participated in these initiatives, and the work throughout the entire organization, from teachers, to support staff, coaches, directors, and the superintendent's office. It was really a laser-like focus to get all of this done this year. And then you have some big, big construction over the summer as well with the vestibules and the Haskins. And really, as an organization, we're being thoughtful about the learning spaces for kids. So not only are we thinking about those relationships that we have with students, and then developing a very solid and innovative curriculum that we're using, but then where is this happening, and what are the spaces that this is taking place? So I feel that we, as an organization, have a lot to celebrate, and a lot of evidence of the success throughout this year. And I'm also excited, in the next month or two, to come forward with our strategy for the coming year. So the next year's strategic plan as well, that will build off of the success and just keep the momentum going moving forward. So I'm happy to take any questions you might have in relation to the strategic plan and of your report, or on any of the initiatives that we worked on.
To make you earn your money.
Yes, Mr. Lemke.
Under milestone four, I just have a couple of questions. So the evidence of completion column, is that the goal, or is that what's been done? Because under the talent one, it's, one of the things it says is, survey data indicate 100% satisfaction rate, but in the bullet points below, it says 95%.
Correct.
And so how am I supposed to read that?
That's a great question. So our initial hope was for 100%. So at the beginning of the year, that was the metric we were striving for. The one below the report is actually what was compiled.
And so then, I'm wondering, on the mentor program, it says 94% satisfaction. Too bad it's not 100. But is that on both sides, the mentor and the mentee? Or are we just talking about the mentors?
That is actually the mentees, but we do survey both.
And does everyone automatically get a mentee? Or if you've been, you know, if you're a 10-year teacher but new here, then you don't get one?
That's a great question. So by state law, new teachers have to be a participant in a two-year approved, a state-approved mentor program. So if they come to us without that, or less than five years' experience, they're always given a mentor. But everyone who walks into the district is given an advisor, because we feel that District 67 is its own organization, we have our own way of doing things, and everyone who walks into the organization needs to be enculturated into doing that. So they're given an advisor. If they're coming in with 10 years of experience, they've been through that program, they're a more seasoned teacher.
First of all, I want to say this is great. I mean, where we were two, three years ago with this, in terms of how well it's organized, how clearly it's laid out relative to helping us and the public understand your focuses, the tasks, and goals that you're setting to show how well we're succeeding in attaining those goals is wonderful. I would suggest we still need to get a bit more focused on how we measure success, instead of just saying, we're going to do this.
Mm-hmm.
Because in most cases, just doing it isn't necessarily success. Doing it effectively is the measure of success. So we need to define that and better articulate that, so that's good. But overall, I think this is wonderful. I do have just one high-end question, which is, as Rob pointed out, there are some things that didn't quite meet what we'd stated our goal to be, but overall, where would you put our level of success in attaining this year's strategic plan? 80%, 90%, 50%?
Yes. Can I go through a couple of your points?
You may.
So, thank you. We think it's well-organized as well, and I think that's evidenced by the connection that we can all make to what we've worked on, and the success, whether completely complete or that we're moving towards, there's success in each of those pieces. As we're moving into this year, we agree with you, we even need to refine it more. We're an educational and learning organization, so every time we do something, it's never good enough. It's that risk-taking, it's moving forward. So we've put pieces into place to do that as well. For example, we want to bring our strategic plan to both our, what's called the CCC, the Curriculum Coordinating Committee, and our Board of Education Education Committee, prior to it coming to the board. So what we're looking for is more voice from all of the stakeholders to build the strategic plan, so that it can be more refined as we're moving forward. I'd also like to bring it as a draft to the board, so that we can have conversation about the metrics, and then move it to the next month for approval. So I think those are all very valid and excellent points. I think we had a good start, but I think over the next year and two and three years, it'll get even more refined. I think we were very, very successful in each of the initiatives. I mean, I would put us at 80, 90% moving towards the goals, and that they're all highly effectively implemented. So if we need to do a better job of evidencing that in other ways than just it being a checkbox, I think we can certainly do that and showcase that work.
So if I heard you correctly, would we anticipate the draft process being September and the approval process being October?
That's what I would like, yes.
Rick, can you go back in your presentation, that slide right there? It's, the risk-taking was, I was looking for it in our milestones, but it's actually in our core values. The top bullet, the last sentence there, the willingness to take risks and learn from mistakes. And this is one of the things in creating the strategic plan. I have a question. Should we put, we want 100% of our teachers to be satisfied with our mentor program? Well, why would you want to have anything less than 100%? And so 95% is really, really good.
Mm-hmm.
But I think the decision to have 100 on there is the right one. Much of the work that the board sees here, and that the community and administrators see, is strongly influenced by Rebecca, and the work that Rebecca has done to work to develop ideas that are clear and tangible, and also to present it in a format that is easily accessible. So you make sure and give credit where credit is due. It's really very, very well done. I would echo Jeff's, response to Jeff's question. Some of the things that our staff have accomplished have- Some of the things that our staff have accomplished have been part of this strategic plan that are easily taken for granted. Four years ago, when the district began and first implemented this mission and vision and milestones, we had a different reading curriculum in every building in the district. Every elementary had a different writing curriculum, a different reading curriculum, frequently different math curriculum we're taught. We now have a unified, research-based, quality curriculum for every student in the district that is written and documented and then assessed. And to get to that point in this short a time, most of you are not educators. Suzanne, you are. You know how hard this is to get this far. And also, not just to get it that far, but also have the teachers say, "This is really good stuff. It's as meaningful for our students." And Susan Millsk, a ton of credit for Susan's hard work with all the people in the district. And then to have kids also say and be proud of the products that they are creating. So this is a tremendous step forward on just that one point, but that one point's a critical one because we've been talking about a guaranteed and viable curriculum for four years now. It's like the most boring thing in the world that we could talk about. But what that means is that your third grader at Everett is learning the same quality stuff as your third grader at Cherokee, who may be twins and are in two different classes. What that means for those students is that that will wind up showing up on an assessment that is a valid and reliable assessment of the curriculum that was supposed to be taught that was taught. And you're going to be seeing evidence of what that winds up looking like. But there are other things that we're doing as well, the social emotional learning. You don't want to lose sight of that. And embedding that in every single thing that every teacher does, so it's not an event, it's all day, every day. So any other questions?
Well, may I make one statement? So this is two, four, six bullet points, which seems simplistic, but the synergy that you have in this organization right now is fantastic. And what that allows us is momentum to move not only thoroughly, but efficiently and quickly as well. So these six bullet points represent a ton of work, and I would be remiss to not share the kudos with Susan Millsk, who is a phenomenal director of teaching and learning and really helping to push these things forward. Dr. Ingrid Wymer, who is working with our special education staff and in many other areas, and in communications and duty with technology and learning spaces. So this really is a team effort and there's always more and better work to do, but we feel very proud of the work that's been accomplished this year.
So I'm not sure if this is a comment for you or maybe Ann. I mentioned in my comments, this theme of finding joy, and I'm not sure that our board has heard about it, and they may think that I just made it up, which I sometimes do. I didn't in this case. So this whole presentation, I am sitting here thinking, "This is finding joy," and someone should be tweeting it out.
Yes.
And can you maybe tell the board or other six members who maybe haven't heard about the finding joy theme, what's going on, or Rebecca or someone?
So we chose the theme of Finding Joy 67 because not only do we want our staff to find balance and find joy, both in their personal, professional life, but to bring attention to all of the good work that we're doing. So our hashtag is for the year, and we have many other hashtags as well, but one of them is FindingJoy67. And if you are on Twitter, I would highly recommend you search that because even on opening day, there were 50 or more tweets on what is the work that we're doing. And I feel that this type of an organization has an obligation to not only be a trendsetter in moving us forward in the work, but we also have an obligation to be showcasing our work for others who don't have the same resources. So using Twitter as that marketing tool, not only for our own community, but for other school districts who can learn from what we're doing as well. So our hashtag is FindingJoy67. And then I'm going to turn it over to Ann, and I don't think there's any other questions for me.
I just want to say, I just took the photograph of this, and if one of the two of you will teach me how to tweet afterwards, I will put that on FindingJoy67. Sorry, hashtag.
And I think that's important too. But your support is very, very precious to us, and we appreciate you challenging us, pushing us in the right places, and then supporting us as well. So thank you.
That's actually a perfect segue to what I was going to say. We think part of this is getting our parents involved in this initiative. And so we've proposed this year to work with all the APTs, and at one of their meetings actually help people get on Twitter, learn how to tweet, learn how to take their own pictures and contribute in that way too. So that's one area. And then in reference to the strategic plan, in addition to it being part of Finding Joy, we'll also include this information in the board report that's sent to every parent and community member, and we'll be putting it on the website, so there will be access to the full report in a more meaningful way than just in the board packet, so it can highlight some of these areas too.
And for board members who are available tomorrow, we're having a grand opening at this H2O Center, and we're going to be Finding Joy there as well. So come if you can.
I think you'll see a lot of that year. We, this year, we hope to infuse it in almost every initiative that we have with staff, students, and parents. So stay tuned. Hopefully, there'll be a lot of joy to spread around this year.
Other questions or comments on the strategic plan and of your report, or any other related topic? Let's move on to the post issuance tax compliance report. Who would like to give that report? Anyone?
Everybody's going to jump up. Anybody want to jump up for that one?
Please me.
Paul? Paul, you want to give that report, Paul? No? Okay.
Jen?
Eileen.
We are going to find joy with the post issuance tax compliance report.
I'm going to find joy by reorganizing the agenda items next year, I think. That's a tough act to follow. Actually, in your package tonight is the post-tax compliance report, simply in a requirement of the bonds that we have issued. You'll see it every single year, as long as those bonds remain outstanding. Basically says that we follow all record-keeping and all of the rules and regulations associated with our bonds.
Questions or comments regarding the post-issue tax compliance report? Seeing none, we move on to board committees. First report is the Board Education Committee chaired by Jeff.
We have not met. However, our first meeting will be Friday, September 17th, here in the West Campus at 8:30 in the morning. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Move on to Board Finance and Ops chaired by Tom Ford.
I was in the middle of something. Finance Committee has not met recently, and our next meeting is in November. I don't have the exact date, I'm sorry. I'll be much sharper next month.
No questions this time for you. Tom, we'll move on to Policy Committee chaired by Kent.
And unfortunately, we haven't had a meeting for well over a month or two. Had an enjoyable summer. No meeting yet is scheduled, but hope to have one soon.
We are rolling along to the Compensation Committee. Rob?
The Compensation Committee met, and we have a ton to report. No, it has not met either.
Nor has the Shared Services Committee, Board Operating Procedures Committee.
Sadly, the Board Operating Procedures Committee has not met. And unfortunately, this is still an outstanding fiscal year 16, 17 board objective that was not achieved. We need to get this taken care of. So I would hope that within the next month or so, we can set some time aside to drive this to finality, because we're awfully close. We just need to get it done.
All right. Moving on to Liaison Reports. NSSCD, Suzanne.
So NSSCD has not met, but we were given some highlights for summer work that's been happening. We did extend the lease for the Rubloff Building, which we were also trying to figure out if we're going to be able to purchase as a district. There were many new administrative and support staff hires and the mentoring for those things, the transitions in and the mentoring that was put in place is all going very, very well. I've been over there a couple times this summer. They had an administrative retreat to start the year, part of which was held downtown at Apple Headquarters with an outside leadership consultant. That all went very well. And we are about to begin the strategic planning process. The first community engagement event of that process is going to be September 14th from 4:30 to 8:30 at the Marriott Lincolnshire, and I believe Mike and I will both be in attendance at that meeting, as well as hopefully the other 18 superintendents from all the districts and their board members, and possibly some special ed directors and other stakeholders in the community who are being invited to that. It's, the timeline for this process is highly involved, and there are a lot of things that are going to be done along the way, and hopefully, we will have something to deliver in January, February, I think is the timeline on that. There's also in my report, a presentation that Sue Hans did at NSSCD at our June meeting that if you're interested in some of the outcomes that NSSCD is looking at and where we're looking at heading and why, it's a great presentation to watch. I included the link in the report. And that's it. We meet next on August 30th at 7:00 PM.
I'd like to, if I could, piggyback on the comments about NSSCD. I had a conversation with the NSSCD Superintendent about two weeks ago, and it's a piece of good news for the 67 Board. One of the initiatives that we've been pursuing for some time is striving to outplace as few students as possible and bring as many students back to our community as possible. The preschool that we now have at Sheridan is one part of that. We brought a number of students back and then retained a number of students that would have left our community. Some of the importance for the, our significantly disabled students is that they are the ones actually most likely to remain in our community. And so you want them to develop those contacts and connections. And Superintendent Schneider passed on that of the sending districts, Lake Forest was the top district in having students serviced within the home district at this point. It was a great piece of news, and that we, that was not the case, not very many years ago. So Dr. Wymer and our teachers are including students in more and more regular, general instructional classrooms. And then that shows up in a whole bunch of different ways, everything from kids being invited to birthday parties in the neighborhood that they wouldn't have been otherwise. And then also academically, that shows up. So both academic and social and emotional improvements for kids. But we are leading the region at this point in an important outcome.
Other questions or comments for NSSCD, Suzanne, Mike, or others? Seeing none, we move on to Legislative Liaison. Tom Ford?
No report for Legislative either.
Thank you. Spirit of 67 Foundation, Suzanne.
The Spirit of 67 Foundation has not met this summer, but the first meeting is coming up, so I'll report at our next meeting.
Thank you. Executive APT, Jeff?
The Executive APT Board has not met over the summer, but they will have a meeting coming up the second Wednesday in September, and I'll report on that at our next meeting.
Thank you. Any other Liaison Reports I may have missed? Seeing none, we move on to Action Items. I'm sorry, we move on to our second public participation. If there's any members of the public who would like to address the board, now is a good time. Seeing none, we move on to Action Items. First action item, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution abating the Working Cash Fund?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call, vote please.
I don't understand this. Is this important? I mean, it didn't come through finance, so I read it. I don't understand what's happening. Is it just pro forma, that's fine, but...
I'll give you the short form. I actually did send an email on it, so I think you did receive that. But basically what it is, is how the bonds are written, when we took in the proceeds from the D-Sub, we're required to bring those into the Working Cash Fund, which of course, we can't actually spend them out of working cash, so we have to transfer them from Working Cash to Operations and Maintenance. Then from there, we have to transfer them from Operations and Maintenance to the Capital Projects Fund, because that's actually where we can spend funds for construction. That's what this resolution is doing, but...
I read that email, and so we need this resolution to do that?
Yes.
Even though we transfer money all the time?
Well, you transfer it by resolution, even when we do, we do it in the budget, but at the end of the year, we actually do resolutions to move it. It's specifically related to these bonds, because they're working cash bonds. The only way you receive them is through the Working Cash Fund, which you can't spend enough.
So it's not a justification for why our fund balance is falling?
It doesn't change anything other than put the money that, for the purpose of which we actually obtain the money, in the right spot to spend it.
So during the course of the year, when we do inter-fund transfers, we're, we don't normally have to approve those, correct? I think that's what Rob's kind of asking, right? It's like, well, during the court, normal course of business in the fiscal year, we're not...
We do line item transfers, and then the board approves those in bulk in June every year.
Okay, okay. Great.
We'll bring them onesie, twosie, but we bring them in bulk.
Any other questions? Comments? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Novot.
Aye.
Dr. Lampke.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next up, may I have a motion to approve the Superintendent 2017-18 compensation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barkowski.
Aye.
Dr. Lampke.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Novot.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the amended Chief Operating Officer Multi-Year Contract, also known as Jen Hermes Contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion? Roll call, vote please, Eileen.
Mr. Fulker.
Aye.
Mrs. Levert.
Aye.
Mr. Novot.
Aye.
Dr. Lampke.
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. Sands.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the AT&amp;T Complete Link with E-Rate Riders Contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or discussion?
Okay, I have AT&amp;T. They're not the greatest in the world. That being said, obviously, we're currently using them, correct?
Correct.
And if I'm reading your note, your letter correctly.
Sure.
In the next three action items, we were under a longer-term contract, but that lapsed sometime during the past school year, and as a result, we've been going month to month at higher rates?
Correct.
Okay, and so what we're doing with these is to get back into that longer-term contract relationship to take advantage of better rates going forward.
Exactly.
Are we confident...
Jeff, can I interrupt for just one moment? This gentleman that is answering your questions with remarkable rapidity and brevity is Mr. Jordan Salas. He is our new CTO. Welcome, Jordan.
Thank you.
Okay, and this is on our August beginning, so those are the three shortest answers this group has ever heard.
And please, keep that up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Off to a roaring start, so with that, Jeff, please continue.
So I guess what I was getting to, Jordan, was I believe these are all two-year, one's a three-year, is that correct?
The Centrex is a three-year.
Okay, and are we confident that getting into this contract for three years is what we want to do with AT&amp;T? That there's not another service provider out there that might actually be either A, more reliable, B, provide better service, or C, would have had the foresight to alert us that our contracts had gone under and weren't trying to take advantage of us as a result?
You know, I can't speak to their communication, having been here, you know, a couple months. In my experience, AT&amp;T at this level for enterprise is outstanding in terms of their support. What I can tell you is, in 115 and the Administration Center here, we have contracts with other phone companies, and at the end of the day, it's AT&amp;T's copper and AT&amp;T's fiber. So everything goes back to them.
Could I ask a question? Welcome. Did you get competitive bids to see what AT&amp;T's pricing was compared to others in the market?
On this, I did not currently. What's nice about these contracts is the minimums we have are very low, so our annual revenue commitment on the Complete Link, for example, is $1,200. Our Centrex lines, which covers our security, our elevators, and a whole lot of other, just kind of standard lines, would more than cover these contracts. So if in the future, we were reviewing that, we would be able to move along with that.
Wouldn't it be a good idea, though, to get a comparison, just to be sure, since we've been going month to month with them and previous to that, did have a contract?
Yeah, absolutely, and I could provide that. That would not be a problem.
Is it standard operating procedure to get three bids or not?
I think it depends on the particular service. I don't know necessarily if we've done that on phone lines. Certainly on equipment and things of that nature, we would.
I just know it's a very competitive industry, and I think it'd be interesting to see the pricing that they gave us. pricing that they gave us, just, just to verify that what they did give us was, was the best option for the district.
Absolutely. Part of the area where we're going to run into issues with that, at least immediately, is that there's other contracts we have with AT&amp;T. For instance, they're called our PRIZE, which is our outbound trunks, which carry all of our phone numbers with them. Those contracts are largely staggered. So if we were to find a new service to support what you have in front of you, we would still be paying on those going forward and our numbers are currently tied up with AT&amp;T in that. So part of this process is going to have to be bringing that contract, which will be up shortly, essentially to co-term with these contracts.
And that's great. And that might be the case, that because we need to stay with them, we should. But I'd still be very interested in getting a compare, whether you stay or not stay with them, to see if the parts that are being approved, not, not what we have to have, the numbers, but just to check.
Absolutely. And I would be happy to look into that with some other providers.
How long would that take, do you think?
Probably, in my experience, at least a month, month and a half, for them to get bids out here.
So should we table this action item and the next two with the idea that we could come back in two months?
We could certainly...
And we're going to pay month to month for two more months?
Yeah, if, if the board is comfortable with that, we certainly could.
Any downsides to that that we're not thinking about?
I mean, just the cost, essentially, especially given our small revenue commitments on this. $1,200 over the course of a year for the complete link. The Centrex lines would be awfully difficult to move in the long run and those are probably our biggest expense on here. So we would be paying month to month on those for another couple of months.
So Jordan, you say that we're going to save $9,400 a month because we let it lapse?
Yes.
And number one, when did it lapse?
I don't have that information in front of me. I, you know, I wasn't...
Are you sure it happened in the last year and not like three years ago?
I am reasonably sure. That is, just looking back at the budget, that would seem to indicate when it lapsed historically.
And so instead of us knowing that we're saving $9,400 a month, how much will we be spending each month? So I'm hearing $1,200 for something. There's three contracts here, right?
Yes.
How much will each cost us per month going forward?
So the, the completely contract is, again, difficult to say because that is a mostly billed usage contract. I have in there the fixed costs. So, and that's complete link in terms of fixed costs. What it will cover is our plain old telephone service lines, which is a total of 28 lines or 716 a month for one grouping of numbers and 135252. I'm sorry, that's our total. I was looking at the wrong column. It'd be 24696 per month under the contract rate and 46648. So about just under $750.
The, the point I'm trying to make is if we're, if it's costing us $9,000 a month and the entire contract is $2,000 a month, I'm not so sure why we would table it.
And if you look at the billed usage discount, the amount we're going to pay per minute, which is not anything that can be included on here because that's something that depends on usage month to month, goes down significantly as well. We'd be looking at minimum owing AT&amp;T $1,200 for the course of the year just to let this contract ride, at least on the complete link.
I'm just of the opinion that the $112,000 is a huge win. Let's, let's sign it and move on.
I, I echo that, Rob, because I was, my question would be, how much would we spend to try to figure this out? And if figuring it out, we come to, oh yeah, this was the best thing, then we just spent a lot of money. And if we come to, we could save less than what we just spent, then we haven't gotten anywhere either. So there are two possible outcomes where we don't get to a better place. I do, however, think that going forward, before these contracts are up again, we ought to be, that, we ought to be looking at what our options are in the market. Or the next time that a piece of this is up, where we have an opportunity to re-decide, is AT&amp;T still who we want to be with? We need to make sure that proactively, we go out and start looking and getting that information when we have a contract-ending opportunity to do so.
Absolutely.
Just, I don't, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. Are all three of these contracts worth at least $25,000?
The expectation is they would be at current levels of spending.
All three?
Yes.
Okay. So to Alice's point, though, board policy requires that any contract greater than $25,000 be bid. So...
Absolutely.
That, that is technically...
I think there's exemptions for certain things.
There are, but I don't believe phone service providers would fall under that. I'd have to go back and look. Well, that's the question around the, the type of service that's being provided and the scope of providers that are in it, right? And the level of expertise that's provided and all that kind of, the uniqueness of the expertise that's provided. Anyway, I don't have a problem going forward, either, but I'm just saying to Alice's point, she's right. The, the policy would suggest we should be bidding this.
Other questions or comments?
I think this falls under technology and all technology in and of itself is exempt.
Then why do we do copier, why do we bid copier contracts? That's technology.
I don't think by policy we would be required to, but we joint bid that with other districts to maximize our, kind of the volume.
Okay. I'd have to go back and look. But that, like I said, I don't have a problem based on Rob's point and Suzanne's point of moving forward with this. I think it's great work. Thank you for recognizing a, a big opportunity for us.
Of course.
Just want to make sure we are in compliance.
I'd like to make a counter motion to table this one month and ask for two competitive bids for decision maybe at the next board meeting.
So we've got a counter motion to table this item for a month to get two competitive bids. Is there a second to that counter motion? I will second it. Is there discussion or questions on the counter motion to table the item?
Can we get the two bids in a month?
Again, that, that's difficult to say with, with services or bidding. For services such as Centrex, you know, that would be, that would be a much higher bar. It's an AT&amp;T service and would require basically an examination of lines running into the building down to the street. So I would have, that would be more difficult in terms of the complete link contract and the long distance. That may be possible, depending on how quickly the vendors get back to us. In my experience, telephony moves incredibly slowly.
So Jordan, I want to ask...
Sure.
Related to Tom's question, I'm less concerned about how much wheel spinning the vendors do, and I'm more concerned about how much wheel spinning you do. Jen has told us from time to time that some RFPs, for lack of a better term, can be very complex, but I also think there are times that RFPs can be a single piece of paper and not complex.
Yes.
You don't have any time to study this, but what's your knee-jerk reaction? Is this going to, for your time, not the vendors? How complicated is this going to be for you to get additional bids?
It's a pretty complicated process, just given the amount of services we have with them and the, just how many different services that this agreement would cover. The additional complicating factor is that all services are provided through those PRI contracts. So part of any bid that would have to be received would be replacing those as well before their contract had run out.
Thank you. Other questions or comments on the counter motion to table?
Are these contracts, did AT&amp;T just send them to us? Like, did they choose two years or did you choose two years?
I chose two years just as trying to get us on paper and trying to bring us to a point where we can kind of co-term everything together. The Centrex is required to be a three-years, but the minimum on that is two lines. So again, we could bring it down significantly, even if we chose to exit that market, or that service, excuse me.
And you commented that Centrex lines are dedicated lines or...
They are.
Would we need to then pull those lines and put in new lines that are specific to the vendor we would go with? And is there a cost associated with that, obviously?
Yeah, because it would be, it would be part of the implementation process. It would be new lines brought in from the street. I would also imagine that in most cases, a new vendor would probably just lease the existing lines from AT&amp;T to provide services to us. But again, that would be a process of them going through AT&amp;T to provide that service.
I'm just very uncomfortable that accepting just from one service provider, what they think they're sharing with us as a savings. I'm very uncomfortable not comparing it, but I appreciate the effort you've put forward.
So my comment, not only to you, Jordan, but really to the entire administration, you've heard from this board on more than one occasion, there's a board policy and there's exceptions for bidding things out. And I personally am less concerned with the letter of the law of the exceptions. I, I believe that, I'm speaking for the board in general, when I say, this board's philosophy is when in doubt, bid it out. And whether or not there is an exception, that's not really our main concern. If there's an opportunity to bid things out, unless there's a really good reason not to, it isn't because there is an exception, it's because there's a good reason not to. So I'm going to not vote to table it and I'm going to vote to pass this, but at the same time, I'd like you and your team to take that message that when, when there's an opportunity to bid things out, I think we'd like that.
It, it also should be said that it's great that they found $112,000.
Agreed.
And they acted on it.
Finding joy, 67. Jordan, $112,000. Well done.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the counter motion to table?
And I would like to say thank you to Alice for speaking your mind and speaking your conscience on this. I think it's a very good and very valid point. And if, in this case, it may well be the case that we would wind up spending more money than we might possibly save on this. But to Mike's point, bidding these things going forward is prudent practice.
I do have one last question. The, the rates that we have in these contracts, how do they compare with the rates before we went month to month?
So the rates before we get month to month, I don't know if you've ever seen like an AT&amp;T tariff schedule. It's massively complicated. What I can tell you is, so one of the billing statements was outstanding. Let me get to my numbers. So, you know, just, and again, I can provide more anecdotal information on this. One of the things I noted in here is I'd requested a full billing comparison from AT&amp;T. They had not gotten back to me completely in time. But what springs to mind and what really got me going on this is a call that was made in the district to Chicago, which qualified at the long-distance rate. It was a 45-minute call and it was, I want to say, it wound up costing us over a dollar a minute. So that's what kind of led me to really pursue this and try and get something on paper quickly because we were paying a huge rate for calls like that. And now they'll be largely capped at four and a half cents per minute. So I apologize, it doesn't completely answer your question, but I was still awaiting a full billing comparison.
I'm glad we hired you. If there's no other questions, can I call for a vote on the counter motion to table this item, please?
Mr. Novotny?
Aye. So just to be clear, the question that has been, you're voting on right now is whether you want to table this or not table this. So, very good. Perfect. Thank you.
So, Mr. Novotny, you would like to table it? Is that the answer I'm getting? Okay. Dr. Lemke?
No.
Mr. Ford?
No.
Mr. Borkowski?
No.
Mr. Fulkerson?
No.
Mrs. Levert?
Yes.
Mrs. Sands?
No.
So the motion does not carry?
So the motion, the counter motion to table the item does not carry. If there's no further discussion on the original motion, could we have a roll call vote, please, on the original motion, which is to approve the AT&amp;T Complete Link with E-Rate Riders contract?
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Nay.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Novotny?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. We now move to a related item. May I have a motion to approve the AT&amp;T Centrex with E-Rate Riders contract?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions or discussion on this item?
I request to table this as well. Counter motion to table, please.
Is there a second to counter, is there a second to the counter motion to table this item?
Second.
Comments or discussion on the counter motion to table this item?
Jordan, based on your earlier comment, it sounds like even if we went with a bidding process, the fact that the lines are in place from the street, it'll probably be leased by any provider or vendor that we would go with, so therefore, there's probably not any real savings.
So I, what I, I mean, while I couldn't guarantee that, what I can tell you is that at the high school and for the admin center, we have two different groups, L3 and XO, which is Verizon. And when there's trouble tickets with those, with either, you know, just the plain old lines or our higher volume, our PRIZE, they're called, we call them and then they submit a ticket to AT&amp;T. So in this area at least right now, the copper network is AT&amp;T. So that would be my expectation.
Jordan, I fully realize you were not here when this happened, so don't remotely take it personally. I'm finding great joy that we're saving $112,000. I'm finding a little less joy that the contract's lapsed. I guess we want to learn from this situation. If we want to learn from it, we have to look at how and when and where these contracts lapsed. Do we have a new and improved process in place so that contracts won't lapse?
As of right now, it's a calendar I'm keeping. That's basically warning me to investigate these things a couple of months before anything comes up upon their approval.
And I guess I would extend that to the whole business office on any contracts. It's not AT&amp;T-specific when contracts come up. So, okay. Thank you.
So question, back to Jeff's point. If there's a requirement for $25,000 or higher, is this being considered an exception by not getting the bid?
Yes, because the amount of this contract is expected to exceed $24,000. So it's, I do believe that it is exempt from bidding from the school code because it is considered technology.
Other comments, questions on this? Let's have a roll call vote, please, on the counter motion to table this motion, please.
Mr. Borkowski?
Nay.
Mr. Fulkerson?
No.
Mrs. Levert?
Yes.
Mr. Novotny?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Nay.
Mr. Ford?
Nay.
Dr. Lemke?
No.
So the motion does not carry.
So the counter motion to table did not carry. So now, unless there's further comments or discussion, could we have a roll call, please, on the original motion, which was to approve the AT&amp;T Centrex with E-Rate Riders contract?
Mrs. Levert?
Nay.
Dr. Lemke?
Yes.
Mrs. Sands?
Yes.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Mr. Novotny?
No.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. One more of these. May I have a motion to approve the AT&amp;T Long Distance with E-Rate Riders contract?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
I'd like to introduce a counter motion to table it.
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion on the counter motion to table? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote on the counter motion to table this item, please?
Mr. Fulkerson?
No, thank you.
Mrs. Levert?
Yes, aye.
Mr. Ford?
Nay.
Mrs. Sands?
Nay.
Dr. Lemke?
No.
Mr. Borkowski?
No.
Mr. Novotny?
Yes.
Motion...
The motion, the counter motion to table did not carry. Unless there's any discussion, may we have a roll call, please, on the motion, the original motion to approve the AT&amp;T Long Distance with E-Rate Riders contract?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Nay.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Borkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novotny?
No.
Mr. Fulkerson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And why don't we say a hearty welcome to the district?
Thank you very, no, I appreciate, it's always good to have questions. So thank you very much.
And Jordan, I just mentioned to Mike quietly that we'd like at the next board meeting, probably beforehand in workshop, to get to know you a little bit, have you come and present on what you're doing and what your priorities are for the year and get to know you a little bit. So...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Love to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up is the adoption of Title I District Plan. May I have a motion to approve the Title I District Plan?
So moved.
Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion? Fortunately, you did not push the button, so I will not recognize that comment.
Susan, how long did it take you to write this?
A little like it.
Yeah, it looks like it.
This is a really stupid question, Susan, but all these boxes say you have 7,500 characters. Is that for the whole document or per box? And are other school districts actually writing that much?
I don't have an answer to that. I don't know.
So this is reflective of things we've done in the past and it's a fine report, right?
Well, and I can't submit it to the state, we can't submit it to the state until this board approves it, at which time they will review it and then they will come back if there are things-
But we've submitted something very similar to the state in the past.
Yes.
It just hasn't had to come to board approval previously.
Well, it was, it was a while ago because it was under No Child Left Behind. For now, now it has transitioned to ESA, so the state is requiring a new plan be filed.
Yeah. To Rob's question, the 7,500 characters, that is per box. So if you are in a district that is the size of Chicago, 7,500 characters, I don't know how you answer this question. So they have everything from 129 kid roundout to LA Unified.
Any other comments or questions on this? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 94?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 2:120 Board Member Development?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion?
I'll just say that this policy was introduced in trying to create or have some level of alignment with District 115. This is a policy that's in the District 115 policy manual and as the committee, back when I was chair, we looked at it, we agreed that there was an opportunity to put this in to be in alignment with that. At the same time, several items that we have in the Board Operating Procedures Manual reference back to information relative to board development, particularly as it regards new board member onboarding and training. So we felt that it also added value to have this policy officially in the manual to create that alignment back with the Board Operating Procedures Manual.
Other comments? Roll call, please?
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources items, including District 67 administrative, administration contracts as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please, Eileen?
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Any item from the consent agenda may be removed at the request of any board member. I will now read the consent agenda. Approval of disbursements, payroll and financial statements dated June 2017, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop June 27, 2017, minutes of an executive session June 27, 2017, disposal of audio recordings October 27, 2015. Does any board member want to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Roll call vote, please, Eileen.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Mrs. Sands?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, may I have a motion to approve the second reading of Press Issue 94?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? Roll call vote, please?
Mr. Ford?
Aye.
Mr. Novot?
Aye.
Mrs. Levert?
Aye.
Mr. Sands?
Aye.
Dr. Lemke?
Aye.
Mr. Barkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Fulker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the second reading of Policy 2:120 Board Member Development?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments or discussion?
I'll just say that this policy was introduced in trying to create or have some level of alignment with District 115. This is a policy that's in the District 115 policy manual and as the committee, back when I was chair, we looked at it, we agreed that there was an opportunity to put this in to be in alignment with that. At the same time, several items that we have in the Board Operating Procedures Manual reference back to information relative to board development, particularly as it regards